God bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And send that we praise God, we thank God for another day, another week, that He have smiled on us, another week been good to us, another week that He just showed out and just let us know that He still our provider, still our protector, matter of fact, He still our all and all. I send that we greet each one of you in the marvelous, matchless, majestic name of Him who does things well. To all of our new hope persons and to all of our friends and family that shares with us each week during this time, we send that we are appreciative for you taking the time out from your schedule to be a part with us here at this ministry. Send that we want you to take a moment, a minute to call a friend or church member, text them or inbox them or whatever means of contact that you may have to let them know that this ministry is on and that it will do them good, not only on today, but in the days to come. Send that prayers goes out to all of our church members, those who are in our community, those who are nationwide, who ask us to pray for them. I send that we praying for those who are going through season of sickness, a season of bereavement, seasonal difficulties and send that we want you to know you're not just in our thoughts, but you're in our prayers. Those who behind jail and prison walls, those on the battlefield protecting our country and send that we praying for you, praying for our community, our leaders, locally and state and send internationally to police officers and sending firefighters and first responders and sending our schools and all administrators and the personnel within our school system, we praying for you. And send that there ever was a time that we need to praise, we living in that time now as critical, we see things are, but we still must be reminded that God is still on the throne, that He still in charge and when we fail to listen and to yield to Him is that He would permit these catastrophes, these casualties and these triors, mother nature allow Satan to do these things that will cause us to not only ask how long or why things like these are happening, only to realize we know the answer. And the answer is we look at ourselves and how man has made himself or herself a God and have taken the true and only living God out of the equation. Is that we, yes, we was created as worshippers, but when we fail to worship the only true and living God is that is that we'll become wishable thieves. We take away that which belongs to someone else and give it to either ourselves, others or things other than God. And so, but God said, "I have a remedy that if my people, which are called by my name, are you listening, will humble themselves and seek my face, pray, turn from their wicked ways, then I hear from heaven." And that's the remedy, that's the solution. But we first have to say, "It's me, I'm the cause of this." And the Bible then said that men will become wise and wicked, that they will even fool the elect, there'll be a falling off, a falling away. And we seeing that falling before us. And so, we need to pray, we need to seek God's face, we need to turn from our evil and wicked ways and go back to God. So let us pray, gracious God, our Father, we come today in the most humble way that we know how we come, gracious Father, thanking you for another opportunity, another privilege to talk to you. Lord, do you know our hearts, you know our heart's desire? And God, do you know what we're going through? Because you came in a person of your own begotten Son to be able to identify with us personally, about the gravity and the depths of what we as human goes through. God, we pray, asking that you forgive us now, all of our trespasses, all of our sins. Lord, you said, "As far as the east is from the west," that if we confess our sins, that you will remove them. Not only will you remove them, but you will, you will no longer remember them. God, we asking for forgiveness now of all of our, of all of our sins, our shortcomings. Lord, thank you for being our provider, thank you for another opportunity, another day, another week, another opportunity to feel your presence and your love, to know that we cannot move, we cannot exist without you. Thank you for sending a helper in the person of the Holy Spirit, not honored to lead God, but he's our helper. Thank you that you continue to meet our every need. Thank you for angels watching over us. Thank you, dear Father, for just being who you are. Now, God, I pray now for each person, each home, God that is in tune with this ministry at this time. Bless them in the mighty special way. Meet your needs according, meet the needs of your people according to your riches and glory. Father, as we yield our will to yours, we pray, continue to have bound way, you are the potter and we are the clay. Continue to mold us and shape us into who and what you want us to be. Bless us now, bless our church family. And God, we praying for the sick people, some who are physically, some who are spiritually sick. Touch them right now in the mighty name of Jesus. Heal, deliver, set free, do what we are unable to do for ourselves. Lord, we gonna give you all the praise. Hear our petition, hear our cry right now. And Lord, is there anything that we fail to ask you at this moment? We pray, if it be your will, to grant it right now in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, I pray, I pray for the body of Christ, I pray for every believer. Lift them up before you right now. Lord, come now in the person of the Holy Spirit, touch our spiritually ears that we can hear, our eyes that we can see, our hearts that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We asking now, oh Father, that you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. You are our rock and thank you for being our redeemer. In your son, Christ Jesus' name, we ask it all. Amen. All right, I want to get right into our discussion steady on today as we still dealing with stewardship. And we want to look at dealing with ownership, want to look at owner, owner, ownership as it relates to our stewardship, being a good steward. And I want you to turn your Bible to 1 Corinthians chapter number six. And we want to focus in, start them perhaps on today, a couple verses in that sixth chapter of 1 Corinthians, in particular verse 19 and 20. We're gonna read it a little bit later, but 1 Corinthians chapter six and verse 19 and 20 is what we want to kind of focus in on and do our discussion as steady on as it is relates to ownership. Paul talks about being belong to God. Paul alerts the Corinthians church or to the idea, let me just read it and then we'll go back and break some, break, dissect this verse. But I like how the New Living Translation says it like this. He said, "Don't you realize that your body is the temple of the Holy Spirit, who," which talking about the Holy Spirit, "lives in you and was given to you by God? You do not belong to yourself, for God brought you but a high price. So you must honor God with your body." Talking about ownership. And we know anything about ownership, it has to do with an agreement, a contract, that one person usually be the seller, is that he's buying a product, usually be the buyer, and they makes an agreement, they makes a contract of between two parties, whether they selling some goods, whether it's a business, contract, agreement, as a vehicle or even when it come down to land, is that it's, 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 it's an agreement between two parties, the seller and the buyer. The seller is the person buying the product from the buyer. And what Paul is teaching here is that, is that, and what he's really describing is our new relationship that we have with God. God bought us, God said that with me, "God bought me." And so, and so we as believers is that we are no longer belonging, we belong to ourself any longer. When we sell something is that from that, from when we buy, when we buy something from the seller is that who we brought it from is no longer theirs. They may see it, they may have a desire, wanting it back, they have to go back through the process of buying it. And so, since we are believers, we've been bought by a price and that price that was, that was, that was put up to buy us was the blood of Jesus and since we was bought with a price is that we do no longer belong to ourself, but we belong to God. And this is what Paul wanted the church at Corinth to know, that to God, our existence and our conduct are what pastor, are important. I think Paul, I think, no, no, it wasn't Paul, it was David that says that we were fearfully and wonderfully made. It is that, is that we were fearfully and we was wonderfully made by God. And for centurions is that man has been studying the mechanically or the makeup of mankind, dealing with man existence and still man does not understand all that he is to know about our makeup. And, 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 and one of the saddest thing that I think Paul was trying to reiterate and trying to get those Corinthians believers, and I still think, I believe that he's speaking to us today, is that, is that, is that we as believers, we as Christians, we as stewards don't understand much about our existence as well, just like scientists, just like a man trying to understand all the makeup or all the components, so to speak, of mankind and yet they are still at awe, they still don't understand. And, and that's the same way that, that, that is with the believers and which Christians as steward is that we really, many really don't understand about their existence. And so, Paul had to let them, let these Corinthians know that yes, the city of Corinth was a wealthy city because of the commerce that existed there at that particular time. Corinth was situated in a, in a, in a position that it had two harbors and it, it was a place of what you would call a port that, that, that was able to make the exchange of merchandise between countries and it says, when you look at it, Corinth historically is that the merchants was from Italy and Asia and they, they was able to land their cargoes there. And, and the point that I'm making is that Corinth was a wealthy, wealthy town. And not only was Corinth known as her wealth, but the Corinthians worship an idol of God is that, is that, is that they worship the God that is known as Aphrodite, Aphrodite. Is that Aphrodite was the goddess of love and was the goddess of beauty and the goddess of pleasure and procreation. And they had, they erected a temple in honor of Aphrodite. And it was rich, but it was, it, it was rich and it was so rich that it was, that it owed more than a thousand temple slaves, who was both men and women, who had dedicated themselves to this goddess, this goddess. And therefore, it was an account of these women that the city was crowned with people and great rich. The wealth and the influence was tempting even to this, this, this young church that Paul had established here in Corinth. And so, Paul writes not just one, two, but possibility of three letters to these believers in Corinth because when he kind of heard and saw their attitude is that he, when it came down to them being tempted to go back into this idol worshiping of Aphrodite. And so, and so he wanted, he wanted to challenge them to view their existence from God's perspective. And, and Paul had to remind them is that we was created by God. Listen to what I'm finna say, is that he had to remind them that mankind, every human being was created by God, he or she, regardless of how she or he looks at himself or herself, they are the formed by sin, informed by the word, reborn by faith in Christ Jesus and reclaimed as God's property for his glory. Oh, that, that, that's, that's, that's a mouthful there. And let me say it again, just for clarity, is that Paul wanted them to understand that mankind was created by God, deformed by sin, informed by the word, then reborn by faith in Christ Jesus and reclaimed as God's property for his glory. And so, since we as believer was made for the Lord's use and glory is that we have an obligation. Is that, is that, is that, is that as believers, we need to, our spirit, our spirit man needs to be constantly be revived. Our minds has to be daily renewed and, 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 and our bodies has to be, has to be presented, has to be willing to serve the Lord in this life and not only in this life, but in the life to come. Oh yeah, 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 we got, we got, we got, we got an obligation, we got a charge. Are you listening to me? We got, I said, we got, we got, we got an obligation, we got a charge. As stewards, not only in, in the life to come, but in this present life, is that, is that we got to serve the Lord. And so, we have to be reminded that our body is the instrument in which we as men and women of God serve God. It is, our body, it is the instruments that we as believers that we use to glorify God, our bodies. God gave it to us to serve him, to glorify him. And so, and so as stewards, knowing that we is not the owner, but we are stewards, we are servants. But since God is the owner, is that we have to recognize that all that we are is just stewards. All that we have or what we will have is that ultimately that don't belongs to us, but it belongs to God. That he, God, has entrusted this, whatever we have, our resources, our talents, our gifts, our family, each other, this precious gift of salvation is that we have been entrusted to our care. And it's our responsibility to be good stewards. And what has creeped into our society, it ain't just happened a few years ago, but it's been ever since. Perhaps man has been on the scene is that, is that, is that our, and I think it's maybe worse now than it were before, is that our, our society is filled with what we call individualism. Is that, is that, what are you saying pastor? Is that emphasis has been put more on the importance of individual. Give you a good example, talking about freedom, individual freedom, individual rights and individual interests, needs and beliefs. Is that, is that we have exclude not only God out, but family and others, is that we have become more focused in on self. And that's why the Lord just had to direct Paul and to write into the church in Corinth to let them know that there has been a transfer of ownership. There's been a transfer. You may have thought you own yourself. It is just like we make transfer when come down to vehicles, come down to land, come down to properties and goods. Is that, is that we, there's a written contract and it's good to have a written versus verbal. There's always a buyer and there's a seller. And when, and when one transfer of goods, a property from one person to another, that's what is called a transfer. And that's what have happened spiritually in the lives of believers when it come down to God. And that's what Paul had to let them realize and understand that, that your body is the temple of God. Our bodies does not belong to us, it belongs to God. That's what Paul said, "Don't you realize that your body is the temple of the Holy Ghost, which is in you, which you have of God?" When you, when you do, when you do a good biblical account of what Paul is talking about, in the Old Testament is that God had a temple for his people. But in the New Testament, God has a people for his temple. That's good teaching right there. In the Old Testament, God had a temple for his people. But in the New Testament, is that God has a people for his temple. And we have the, we have to be reminded when this transfer of ownership takes, took place is that at the moment of salvation, the body of every believer becomes the temple of the Holy Spirit. He, the Holy Spirit, comes to end the world in us and make our body a sacred habitation. That's why we have to be mindful of what we allowed to come into the body. Just like we should and we do take care of the church building, but what about our spiritually building, which is our body? As we maintain the cleanliness, as we pay attention to the cleanliness and the, the life of a building, has we taken into consideration when it come down to our body? We are sanctuary. That's why, that's why I'm kind of caution when I, when I, when I hear believers who just do and say anything in the house, the temple. We commonly call the sanctuary, the house of God. Yes, God in the Old Testament, he dwells in the temple. That was a place. But now since grace came, is that God dwells in the body of every believer. Our body is the temple of God, is not ours. In other words, let me just reiterate this and remind us is that we don't belong to ourselves. And since we don't belong to ourselves, is that we want to make sure that we want to do our best by giving God our best. Want to do our best at all time, want to give God our best. I think that's a good part, good, good point that'll kind of stop and let us kind of digest what we just cover because I think that's so important is that when it come down to our... because I think that's so important, is that when it come down to our bodies, come down to our temple, who we belongs to. Not only to be, to be the best, to do the best, but to give God our best. Think, I think I'm reminded, matter of fact, yes, it was a story that was told about Queen Mary some years ago, that, that visit Scotland every year. And she had a reputation of loving, love to mingle with, 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 with the citizens and, and, and the people there, Scotland. And, and, and so one day she didn't wanna have her protective escort to be with her, and she wanted to be alone. And, and, and the story says that one afternoon that she decided to take a walk. And she went farther than she had anticipated, and it had got dark. And not only did it got, got dark, but it started to rain unexpectedly. And, and she went, she went to, went by a house and, and, and the nearby house that was, was there in the neighborhood, in, in that, in that, in that area. And she wanted to borrow an umbrella. And she knocked, and the lady that came to, 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 to the door greeted her, but didn't know who she was. And, and she, she, Queen said that I, I just wanna, can you lend me an umbrella? And I make sure you get it back. And this woman didn't recognize, as I said, that this was, this was the queen, and she reluctant to give this, this stranger her best, underline that, her best umbrella. And so she, she handed her one of those umbrella that she intended to throw away. And the umbrella had been worn out and torn. And the ribs of that, on the inside of the umbrella was broken. And, and, and so, so, so she, 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 she did give her an umbrella, but it was her best. And so the next day, there was a knock on the door. And this woman, she went to the door and she opened it and was greeted by the royal guards. And, and she, and that she had, and those guards that gave her back the umbrella that, that the queen had given. And the guard said, "The queen sent me," and, and, and she asked me to, the queen asked me to thank you for loaning her this umbrella. And, and the, and the mother, the woman was, was stunned, she was in shock because of the fact that she did not recognize that it was the queen. And she burst out in tears. And she, she told the guard, "Oh, what a misopportunity that, 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 that I had, and I didn't give the queen my best." And you never, and the, and the, and the, and the point of that particular story is that at all time, you never know who you going to have to entertain. And the Bible did tell us, it may be a stranger. But, but God sometime present himself, his presence will be in some unlikely source. And that's why they boo hooed us, that since we don't know who we, when we gonna entertain God, is to give God our best. Since our body is God's temple, always give God. Let me leave that thought with you. Always give God your best. Cause everything about a believer reflects our attitude toward our God. How we live, what we wear, what we say, how we treat others, reflect our love for God. And I do believe that this woman would have acted differently if she had had another chance to give God her best. God bless and God keep you, is our prayer. Let us pray, gracious God, our Father, we thank you again for your word. We thank you for reminding us that we're not our own, but you brought us. You brought us with a high price. You sent your only begotten son, Jesus, into the world to save wrecks like us. God, we are thankful. Let us never, Father, get to a point that we become unthankful for your gift of salvation. Bless us now. Thank you, dear Father, that who we are, you made us, what we have, you gave it to us. And God allow us to be able to be good stewards, be faithful to your, to your work and your cause. We ask all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name. Amen, and thank God.